Can I ask Senator Torres if you can lead us in prayer?
Kinaaani tata ilahina janispiratu santo, amen. Suus tata nitoro na tsiña. Ufaisin hapaguna dia. Eni DC hamguini giles luture ngwahan. Na iham ipas, zani pasencia. Nitafen. Nitafen danyat, nitafen. Adzura itautauta. Guaha brahi na. Babesenan ten mi, mami. Guaha problem, guaha bulana problema gita nohta. Zeno nau faufaisin kutuabod adzura ham. Na iham pasencia. Anja nisita tanmumu. Tamumuha para imaleknya itautauta. Guaha brahi na nisita unat fitma. Hafa unhongi zahafa kagi gi. Figu kurason, kurason mi tu, kurason mami. So Father, we ask you in these times when often we are troubled, we have high pressures upon us. Guide us with your wisdom, give us the patience and the peace to do your will. For your good, for our good, in your name, we ask you. Amen.
Thank you very much Senator.
Nani tata linijan ispiratu santo.
Sorry, thank you very much Senator. Can I ask the Vice Speaker if he can lead us in the recitation of Inifresi?
Gini mastakaloo, gi hinasaku. Mastakulum ikurasonhu. Zan mesfigu na neshenyahu. Ufaisin maidsudu para bai protehi, zani defendi. Ikutura, ilinguahi, iari, ihanam, zani tanatsumoro. Iriansaku, diretsu gininasiu tata. Esti huet fitma, kihilu biblia, zani banderahu ibandera ngwahan.
I would like to ask Senator Frank Uggan if he can lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro. And Senator Frank Blas Jr. to lead us in the singing of the National Anthem. Thank you very much Senators. Can I ask the Clerk to please take will call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Esvaldon. Senator McCready. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Morrison. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Snikless. Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Wampat.
Gagi tu.
Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move to excuse those members not yet present for session.
Hearing no objections, so order it. On the next motion.
Thank you, and I so moved that we approved the Legislative Journal dated March 30, 2016, subject to correction.
Hearing objections, so order it.
And there are communications and petitions, Madam Speaker, and colleagues, and I moved that they be appended to a session journal.
Hearing objections, so order it.
As well as messages from Imagalangwaha, and I move for the same.
Objections, so order it.
And there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended to a session journal.
So order it.
And there being no reports of select committees at this time on item 12, Madam Speaker. On the introduction and first reading of bills, resolutions, and certificates. In one motion, I moved that bill numbers 288-33LS through 289-33LS. Bill numbers 290-33COR to 299-33COR. Resolution numbers 324-33LS and 293-33LS. Resolution numbers 294-33LS through 326-33LS. Resolution number 327-33COR through 337-33COR. Certificate numbers 125-33LS through 126-33LS. And certificate numbers 127-33COR through 128-33COR all be given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so order it.
Under motions, I moved that. I moved that any resolution or certificate of condolence or congratulatory nature that's introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted, and to allow legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
Objections, so order it.
And I also make this standing motion every time we're in session that when we get to the second reading file, to allow you, Madam Speaker, to reorder the agenda items. If ever the sponsor needs more time, or whatever's necessary in order to facilitate going through the second reading file, and so I move to give you that continued attitude.
No objections, so order it.
And so I, my next motion. On a public hearing that the Vice Speaker had yesterday. Committee reports are being circulated, so I moved to place bill number 294-33COR. And it's an act to add a new section 1E5 to chapter 5 of Public Law 33-66 relative to providing supplemental funding and authorization to the Guam Election Commission for its FY 2016 operations and for payments and obligations incurred in prior years, I moved that this be placed in the second reading file.
No objections, so order it.
And it could be at the bottom of the second reading file, it could be numerical, I'll just leave that to the Clerk to decide its placement. And then the next motion is to place bill 295-33. Whatever version is being reported out, it's been introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz and Senator Underwood. And it's an act to add section 18 to part 1, chapter 2 of Public Law 3366 relative to appropriating and depositing FY 2016 territorial educational facilities fund revenues collected in excess of $28,596,853 to the Guam Department of Education Operations Fund Bank account for FY 2016 GDOE operations.
Hearing objections, so order it.
Madam Speaker, there's a resolution introduced by Senator Frank Blas and other senators. It's relative to encouraging the United States Congress to introduce and adopt legislation that would increase compensation for veterans residing on Guam and other geographically challenged areas in the Pacific for costs associated with obtaining treatment that is routinely available for all other US veterans. I moved this be placed in the second reading file.
Senator, what's the resolution number?
It's resolution number 302-33, I'm sorry. And copies have been made and circulated.
On the motion, hearing objections, so order it.
And there was another resolution that was introduced yesterday and requires ratification by the body. And it's resolution 339-33, introduced by Senator Rodriguez and other senators. It's relative to amending Iminat 33, na la sertun Gwahan Oden ala Clemento, the 33rd Guam Legislature Standing Rules to ensure the timely public hearing of all bills by all sponsors so that the people of Guam's voices can be heard, and I also moved that this be placed in the second reading file.
Any objections, hearing non, so order it.
Madam Speaker, there are several legislative concurrences. And so from the Committee on Municipal Health, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation, on Senator Tina Munia Barnes's Committee on the Nomination of Thomas E.B. Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so order it.
And from the Senator Mike Snikless's Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations and Youth Development, on the nomination of Kamina L.G. Durking to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization with Senator Snikless's Committee's recommendation to confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so order it.
From Senator Rodriguez's Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens, on the nomination of Eloy Estelazama to serve as a member of the GMH Authority Board of Trustees with his Committee's recommendation to do confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
So order it.
And then from Senator Snikless's same committee, on the nomination of Odessa M. Martinez to serve as a real estate broker, member of the Real Estate Commission with Senator Snikless's Committee's recommendation to confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
So order it.
And from the same committee of Senator Snikless's Committee, on the nomination of Christopher S. Murphy to serve as a real estate broker, member of the Guam Real Estate Commission with his Committee's recommendation to confirm, I moved that it be placed in the voting file.
So order it.
And from Senator Rodriguez's Legislative Committee, on the nomination of Lilian Perez Pasadas to serve as a member of Guam War Hospital Authority Board of Trustees with his Committee's recommendation to confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
So order it.
And then finally, from the same committee, to the same GMH Authority Board of Trustees, on the nomination of Melissa Y. Wyble to serve as a member of that board with his Committee's recommendation to confirm, I moved that this be placed in the voting file.
Okay, so order it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much Senator. On the second reading file. First bill on the agenda is bill number 106-33, Senator Uggan Jr., you're recognized.
Buenas dias, Madam Speakers, and todupam allen, a Senator Odoma Gagi Guinea. Good morning, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of bill number 106 as 33LS, as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development in third reading file, please.
Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we have before us a piece of legislation, and I'll just read the title so that in fact our people understand the nature of what this provision will provide. Relative to providing credit for career employees of the government of Guam who have completed their post-secondary or postgraduate education with the assistance of the Pedro Doc Sanchez Scholarship, Professional Scholarship, and who apply for supervisory or managerial positions within the agencies and departments of the government of Guam. Before I commence any additional statements, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the Chair of the Committee for inserting some additional safeguards or provisions contained in here that certainly would allow for this particular provision to be more fairly applied, or equitably applied. And that is the Chair of Finance and Taxation, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for not only reporting this out, but also inserting a couple provisions. As the title reads, Mr. Speaker, this provision would provide credit for any individual that graduates from the Doc Sanchez Scholarship Program as they apply for supervisory or managerial positions. I want to highlight the two additional provisions that I believe are very key that came from the Chair of the Committee that has oversight over this. And that is subsection B on page 2, which reads, "Career employees of the government of Guam qualified for credit pursuant to this article shall only be permitted to avail themselves of one type of credit provided either under this article or for GCA subsection 4104." So there is a limitation, if in fact any of these Doc Sanchez Scholarship graduates would like to take advantage of this credit that would be available if they had not received any additional credit that is provided under other programs in the government of Guam, then they will be eligible for this. Also, Mr. Speaker, the other component that was added here, which I certainly appreciate is, it reads subsection C on page 3. Career employees of the government of Guam shall only utilize the credit established by this section on one application. After it, the credit shall not be added to the applicant's score for subsequent applications. So there are some additional parameters that have been inserted into the legislation as originally introduced, that I feel makes it equitably applicable and also provides an opportunity for those individuals who the government of Guam, by virtue of the Doc Sanchez Scholarship, allows to be able to pursue and enhance their educational experience and background, but allows for the investment on the part of the people of Guam to be able to recognize that investment and give them credit for any supervisory or managerial positions that they apply for should they be eligible under the parameters that now have been provided under this amended bill. So, Mr. Speaker, I do understand, and I appreciate some of the discussions I've had on a personal basis with a number of our colleagues in this room, because they bring up very legitimate perspectives in terms of how this bill can either be enhanced or how it can be even more inclusive as it applies to the Doc Sanchez Scholarship recipients and others who are able to attain their educational training above and beyond what they had when they entered the government of Guam. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask our colleagues for their consideration, and I look forward to any discussion in regards to this bill, and I look forward to considering any amendments that may be put forth. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you Senator. Any senators wish to be heard on the bill? Madam Speaker, after the speaker, any other senator wished to be heard? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Nerissa Underwood.
Very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I support the intent of the Doc Sanchez Program. And the purpose of this program is to establish a government-wide scholarship program in public administration and in other undergraduate degree programs offered at the University of Guam's College of Public Business, Public Administration, and the graduate MPA and MBA programs offered at the College of Business and Public Administration. However, there is a number of government employees who did not participate in the Doc Sanchez Program, but pursued their undergraduate or graduate studies through other financial means. Meaning, of course, that with students, and we all know this, and this continues to happen now, is that either the parents have helped the students, of course, pay for their tuition and books while they go to school. There are those who also work part-time so that they will be able to put themselves through college. And then there's the third, well, I shouldn't say that. The third group will be those who would borrow, actually borrow, from, you know, financial institutions to put themselves through school. And then the last group will be those who are fortunate enough to be able to get a scholarship, whether it's a full scholarship or a partial scholarship. And I remember this bill actually coming to the legislature many terms ago. As a matter of fact, it was actually during the term in which a former colleague of ours had actually brought the bill before the floor. And as a result of that, and with considerable input from the community, especially those who paid their own way, that then there was actually a cap placed in terms of going beyond a certain date in which then, the way the original law was written, that they get a scholarship in which their tuition will be paid fully, books will be paid fully, and they actually get time off from the government to be able to go to school, to pursue their degree under this scholarship, and then at the very end, upon completion, that they would get a step pay increase. And that has been the objection of many of those who came to the public hearing, and I don't see that here, in which those same individuals who testified then have actually even showed up to again voice their concern about this because they were, they were those who did this strictly on their own and were not entitled then to be able to receive that bonus one-step increase for actually completing the program. I believe that parity is needed to ensure that all GovGuam employees have that opportunity to be able to receive the same benefits. And I know I will be dating myself, of course, by having to bring up that there was a time in which this legislature, for whatever reasons, and I always like to say that hopefully in the wisdom of its members, that when they introduce legislation, that it would definitely be in the best interest of, you know, the island of Guam, the people of Guam, rather than only a specific group of individuals. One, at one time, is that there was this one-time credit that was given. And at the time when they did this, there are several reasons, at least from what I heard, and at the time when I know in one term that I was in, was that to try to get individuals who are at the far end of their career or service in the government that is nearing retirement, to be able to save the government some money, was to allow for a one-time buy-in of a degree, a four-year bachelor's degree, and get credit for that provided however they would pay for the years that normally would be required to exit the government at what we call early out. There is a time also where military service was actually given, again, extra points. And in this case, this bill actually calls for giving credit, five-point credit, to give them an edge over other applicants. This bill is doing the exact same thing, is giving an edge for those who receive tuition, books, time off from the government, and when they apply then for a supervisory or managerial position, they would be given the additional five points that will be over any other applicants. And as I said earlier, is that I believe that there should be parity, especially for those who had a harder time financially to be able then to put themselves through school. And some of them didn't go through the normal process, which normally you consider the average of four years to get a degree, but those who have taken longer, six years, seven years, primarily because the monies were just not available to them when they were going to school. So, I have an amendment that I gave one of our pages to Xerox, and I honestly don't know where that is, so. Thank you very much. And can you please remind the pages that that the sponsor or the author of the amendment, that they get the amendment back first? So that then I'll be able now to read it in this particular case. So with that, and the background information that I've given has led me then to actually put it in writing, that if you look then on page 2, line 30, wait, I hope this is the correct one, yeah, line 32. Uh, no, not 32, that should be. Are we using, can we take a brief recess, because I think it might be in the wrong page, page number? Can I, Mr.?
Yes.
So it should be page 2. Boy, I hope it should be right after the first floor.
We've not gone on recess, continue, continue.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. So, on page 2 then, which is really at the end of that sentence, on line 32, is to add this amendment, and there would be a subsequent amendment to base on this, is that I, what I did here, as I said, "Or employees of the government of Guam who have paid for and completed their post-secondary or postgraduate education and who apply for supervisory or managerial positions within the government of Guam shall receive a credit of five points which shall be added to their competitive examination score." That will be the first amendment that I'd like to proffer.
Thank you. Any senator wish to be heard on this Wampat amendment? I see a quizzical look on Senator Frank Blas's face. Senator Frank Blas?
Justice. I guess to, a question that I'd like to pose to the author of the amendment, and to anybody who may know this. Isn't there already points that are provided for additional education?
I'll try to attempt to answer that, because I know, see, this is the one thing that I found a little bit history here, is that at one time, like I said earlier, they had given that, it was a special time to give this out for either an extra early out. There is also in specifically the Doc Sanchez Scholarship that actually, you know, did that. But, like I said earlier, I don't know what legislature it was, I'll tell you that at the time, the bill that was introduced was former Senator Adolfo Palacios that was addressing this issue. And that from that legislation, then there was that, that cap that was put on, that then there was not that additional step. So, that, and what this is doing now is actually putting that back in again.
Does that answer your question? I know that there was a time when I had a public hearing, and I discovered that some of the employees at Department of Education who came back and actually had doctorates were making less than others, and I was shocked. And so I'm not sure whether or not you do get additional credit. And so I'm not sure whether or not you do get additional credit. I, I, so if there are any other members of the legislature who can enlighten us on this, I believe I saw Senator Underwood, maybe she might be able to enlighten us and respond to your question, since you asked whoever could yield and provide information to assist us. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, I was one of those that came back. I had paid for my own doctoral program, and when I came back, I came back, and when I applied, I did not have extra points given to me as somebody had, they considered my doctoral degree as, just as they would any other candidate for that position. So the only ones who were, who had benefited from that program were those who stayed on island and had received their doctoral degree while they were working, while they were working, and I guess they had, they were given extra points, but I did not get them.
And I know she wasn't the only one, because there were.
Yeah, there were three of us, yeah. Thank you.
Additional information, if I may, because I've been following, of course, this scholarship since, you know, since 95, basically. And in doing some research, and I'm sorry to say this, but it's actually very true.
Is your mic on? Oh.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. I've, in the research that I've done, you know, having chaired the committee in education, and specifically because there are so many bills about the scholarship, I have seen, and it's so unbelievable, how the scholarship program has gone back and forth, back and forth, in amending it, almost as if though, I'm fortunate, I don't blame anyone, of course, for this, but it was so unfortunate, because it was always to somehow, you know, address always a certain group. And, and, I mean, I'm serious, Mr. Speaker, that I couldn't keep track of it anymore, because it's changed so much. And I, and I wish there was a way in which, and I plan to do this, as a matter of fact, with the university, is to call for a meeting of the minds, because recently, in meeting with the courts and their request by saying, is it possible that maybe we reconsider some scholarships that will really be needed based on community needs, and not necessarily only to continue with what we've always been doing, and that we need to change to the times? So what I'm trying to say here then, and I don't want to get too far away from this, is that there were points given, then it was allowed by law, then another amendment that's taken it away, then another amendment again in other legislatures, that it's just no parity whatsoever.
Okay, just for the benefit of everybody, 4GCA 4104.1, preferences for scholarship recipients, and the title is scholarship recipients. Notwithstanding any provision of law, to the contrary, departments and agencies of the government of Guam shall provide for preferential hiring of applicants to jobs within the government of Guam to residents of Guam who have completed their post-secondary education, assisted by the award of educational scholarship or loans from the government of Guam. Such preference shall be available only in selection for initial employment. So it's, unfortunately, if you spend your own money, you don't get preference.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, you know, when we talk about the preferential, providing it, I'm afraid that we're going to go down a slippery slope here, and I'm quite honestly, I'm surprised that we haven't been challenged for being discriminatory, discriminate, you know, in being able to provide Because is, my understanding is that, you know, I'm going to be open about the many different scholarships, it's competitive. And so how do we answer for an individual who says they competed for it, they didn't get it, they had to do it on their own, and now they get a double whammy? That since they couldn't get the scholarship, they had to pay it on their own, but because they didn't get the scholarship, they weren't eligible for the preferential points? And so, in light of, you know, I mean, and I appreciate that, and I'm hoping that that's also the intent with regards to what this amendment is for, is to provide that parity, so that we somehow avoid, you know, the possibility of an individual who can actually, and I'm no lawyer, but it seems to be very clear to me, is common sense that we're discriminating against him or her. So, well, I, you know, I recognize the intent of the legislation, I appreciate and support the amendment. It does make it a little bit more comfortable to be able to support this legislation, because then it provides the parity that's necessary, so that we don't leave anybody out. I was one of them, that paid for my own education. I didn't receive any points in my advancement throughout my police career, preferential points on that. But, you know, moving forward, and maybe even retrospectively, retroactively, is, I just don't want to go down that slippery slope of giving an individual an opportunity to say, hey, I was discriminated, and then we're all in a tizzy of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Underwood, on the Juan Pad amendment, please, you're recognized.
Sir Speaker, I appreciate the author of the amendment's intent to provide parity, but actually, I want to bring attention to those who are not employees of the government of Guam, who have paid for and completed their post-secondary or postgraduate education, and who would like to apply for the supervisory or managerial positions. These individuals may have been off-island, getting their degree, or may have worked there and are coming back on island to apply for those supervisor or managerial positions. And I believe that when we start qualifying those who would have extra credits, including the, as long as they are employees of the government of Guam, I think that's already taken into consideration when individuals apply. I believe in fair treatment for all, whether they have gotten their degree on their own, or whether they have received a scholarship, or whether they are government of Guam employees or not. When it comes to managerial positions, we want the very best, we want that to be competitive. And, and those who have received a scholarship, those who have paid for their, and those who are employees of the government of Guam could fairly compete for that position. So I come in, I don't agree with this amendment, and those are the reasons. I believe in fair treatment and equal opportunity.
And your, your concern with this amendment is, are the words employees of the government of Guam?
Yes, that's right.
And, because without those four words, it would mean anybody applying for the, for government position, if they have paid for their own education, or if they were fortunate enough to receive a scholarship, should get an additional credit for having applied.
And that basically opens it up to everyone, which makes the amendment not necessary, because it's, just open it up. Open it up to everyone, whether they're employees of the government of Guam, whether they paid for their own tuition, whatever that may be. Please, let's just open it up. Open up the opportunities to apply for the positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on the amendment? You have a quizzical look on your face, do you wish to have a short recess? Actually, Senator Snick, let's just raise his hand, so maybe let's hear his intervention. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And just to clarify, the amendment isn't closing anything off. Actually, if there's anything that needs to be reconsidered, it would be the bill in its entirety then, because the bill is providing preferential credits just for Doc Sanchez scholarship recipients. The amendment is intending to open it up a little bit further for everybody who paid for their own education, and if we really don't want to be giving out any kind of credits for any particular group, and we want to keep everything fair and opportune for everybody, then we really should just withdraw the entire bill altogether. I just wanted to state that to clarify, because the amendment that's being proffered is not in any way restricting, it's actually opening it up a little bit more for, for other people who may be eligible.
I believe what the senator is saying is, the initial bill only grants five-point credits to Doc Sanchez scholarships. Your amendment opens it up for current Gov Guam employees, but an accountant that's currently at Pete Marwick, who pays for their further education to get a master's and a CPA, will not get five points credit when they come in, but a person currently working for the government at the auditor's office, or at my office, at OFB, who goes off and gets, pays for their own education, or gets a Doc Sanchez, either one, they're the only ones that are getting covered. Everybody is not being, it's not being available to everybody. So I think that's, I hope I stated that correctly, Senator. Okay, on the Juan Pad amendment, do you wish to take a short recess? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, the rules of the game, of course, is, is that, yes, you can either decide to go down the road to support it, or not support it, or then the other is amended. So, and what I'm doing in this case, yes, is amending it, expanding it now to government of Guam employees. Now, the previous speaker wants it as well, for parity beyond the government of Guam, similar to the example that you gave, and the process is, you're right, if you don't want it to be just, like I said, the employees of the government of Guam, then it could be, like I said, the amendment to just that language. So that opportunity was provided, but, you know, to now say, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, either way, it's to expand it, at least right now, for the government of Guam employees, otherwise, the failure of this amendment to pass will only then restrict it to those who have received the scholarship, and not those who paid their own tuition on their own, didn't have any time off from work to do this.
I'll take a short recess.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, you may, any other, before I, she closes. Madam Speaker, you may close, on your amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, I appreciate, of course, all of the comments provided, and normally, the position that I take, and others I'm sure do, is that whenever there's a bill on the floor, and we may not be totally on board, and so, but we could become, be on board by providing amendments, of course, to make it a better bill. And in this case, since it really addresses, in particular, I know it says, career employees of the government of Guam, then I want it to address the other employees in the government of Guam. There are those who feel, you know, strongly as well, that there are others, that we, and we want to bring back, you know, our people to come home after our students have gone off-island to get a degree, so we don't have this brain drain. And you look at the early history of the government and the legislature, what they've done is that to be able to retain our people and to attract our people back, so we don't To retain our employees and get others to come back, the retirement bill was introduced with full benefits, of course, to our workers, our people who are here. But then we're finding that as times change, that has to change too. When the government of Guam needed, you know, teachers, because we were out going off island to recruit as many, as high as 500, maybe even 800, teachers to bring into Guam off-island hires, to the point where the government even built housing for teachers, because we were bringing individuals to our island to fill the gap. In the beginning of this legislation, it talks about just that, retention of, you know, employees. And this is what this is doing. So we offered a scholarship again to be able to retain, quote-unquote, "career" government employees by then giving additional incentive. So we pay for the tuition, we pay for books, we give them time off from the government, and then when they complete, we give them a step increase. Now, in this case, we're going to give a five-point credit over anybody else in the government who went through the same process, not the part of the government paying for theirs, but themselves paying for it. So I want to give them that parity. So I was only addressing the government of Guam employees. Now, you read what legal counsel has given you, in which, of course, is the law of the land now, that it primarily is granted to those who are, you know, first, I mean, the first and the initial employment to the government. Then, in this particular case, you know, we're saying that, except with the exception of the fact that it's government of Guam employees, that it's only applicable to government employees. And my colleague earlier, you know, who had spoken, has some concern. And I know you do too, and you were willing to come down here to do just that. And rather than have, of course, you know, the bill either not get its full -- the full support that we would like it to be, and I asked then my colleagues, of course, the indulgence then if maybe, you know, I be permitted to amend my own amendment then, to be able to incorporate the thoughts of our colleagues here. And that could change everything. I don't know where it's going to go. But all I can say is we can try. So if this is not amenable then to our colleagues here, that it be restricted only to the ones in which, of course, I was addressing, government of Guam employees, that then, as suggested, that it is to delete then the words "employees of the government of Guam" and that it basically then be inclusive of anyone who then wants to apply and has the credentials, can apply, who have paid their own tuition, have completed their programs, but now is -- have the opportunity to apply for a supervisory or managerial position within the government that they too be given that five-point credit. So I'm going to amend my own amendment then, just taking some of the discussions on the floor. And that would -- and so I don't know if you would allow that, just to delete then the words "employees of the government of Guam."
Any objection? On this amended amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any senator wish to be heard on the amended amendment? Thank you.
Now, the other thing, and I don't know whether our colleagues would agree to this, is that to make this all be supportive and rather -- that the language will be the same throughout the bill. And whether the word then -- I was going to ask legal counsel then, is that on page two, that wherever it speaks to career employees, that the word "career," you know, be changed and that -- and I don't know if it's too difficult, Mr. Speaker, that whether in the other sections, since we're saying now that it's not just government of Guam employees, will there be a need to come back to this later on? Maybe looking at how the effect is of saying that it's just any applicant would be then -- should be reflective of subsection A, B, and C? Can I ask for your guidance or legal counsel's guidance on those three sections?
We've adopted your amended amendment.
Yes.
And --
Oh, you're right.
We'll have legal counsel look at it. And if there is need to go -- come back in and it wouldn't be a technical amendment, I would have no problem with us bringing it back up.
Okay. So then now, well, we adopted the amendment to the amendment, but we haven't adopted now the amended amendment, the amendment that has been amended.
Okay. Who wants to speak on the -- is there any objection to the amended amendment? Hearing none.
And so now I would relinquish the chair only and possibly set this aside while legal counsel then would address the three sections to make it then conform to this new amendment that's been adopted.
Okay. I'm not going to set it aside just yet because there were two other people that wanted to speak on the main motion. And Senator Adda, Tom Adda, did you wish to speak on -- yes?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the bill. However, I do have some concerns in section two, paragraph B on page two. And it says here that "career employees of Guam," and I guess now we're going to remove the word "career," "employees of the government of Guam qualified for credit shall only be permitted to avail themselves of one type of credit provided either under this article or for GCA." And so what comes to my mind then is a veteran comes in and he applies for this position. He's got -- he went and he pursued his postgraduate degree or whatever. And he's now entitled to this five points. But he's also entitled, would, you know, I'm just wondering, what would happen to that, to the entitlement of the five-point because he's a veteran? Does that mean then that he can only avail of one of the two? Or will that veteran still -- because according to this language, he would only be able to claim five points and not the five plus five. And I don't think we -- I don't think it was intended that we want to in any way put our veterans to a disadvantage. So the language, as I read it here then in paragraph B of section two, would do that, that it will take away that veteran preference points of that particular veteran. And maybe then if the author could yield and respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to the good senators inquiring with regards to this provision. If the way I read it, Mr. Speaker, and certainly if legal counsel would like to provide some additional guidance, it's specific in nature. It says, "Employees of the government of Guam qualified for credit pursuant to this article shall only be permitted to avail pursuant to the provisions under the Doc Sanchez scholarship that shall be able to avail themselves of either the credit or, if in fact they've availed themselves of credits in other categories, then they will not be able to apply the Doc Sanchez or this credit component that is provided under this article." So if, using his scenario, if a veteran applies and then would like to apply for a subsequent managerial position, the other code, 4104, already provides for that flexibility. So that's my understanding. So, Mr. Speaker, if the good legal counsel could provide additional guidance if it's necessary, the way it was formatted is that it's only under this article that it would be applicable and not necessarily affect the credit provisions in the other code. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. I'll take a short recess and have counsel review that and provide us guidance.
Thank you.